So, good morning, everyone. Today's Thursday. You all set? Wow. This one, I need the hammer.
It's fine.
Maybe we need a sledgehammer.
Can anyone do that whistle thing?
I could, but it's too...
By the time I get it out.
We're good, we're good. Okay, good morning again. June... I like that. Okay, I don't get to do this too often. Okay, June 23rd, 2022, special meeting agenda, consider human resource personnel changes. Attending Commissioners Duncan Brooks and Filios, any changes to the agenda?
Just, we're gonna move some items around when we get in there.
Okay, so the first item, assuming that one's not gonna be moved?
It is. I'd like the first item to be number 10, and this was, and we'll also ratify this contract on Tuesday, and Lieutenant Klinkovis can speak to this. The sheriff services have been requested for an event this weekend, and it's, you know, Tuesday would be too late, so that's why we wanted to...
Now, what item is that?
Number 10.
Oh, we're swapping, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Go right ahead, Lieutenant.
Yes, good afternoon. So, the Candlelight Fellowship Church reached out and was asking for security for an event this weekend at the fairgrounds, they're having a 25th anniversary. This is consistent with other organizations that have asked us for assistance in this, and they're gonna be reimbursing us for the deputy's wage and benefit rate for that time.
And I've reviewed it, I don't have any issues with it? Leslie, you okay?
I am.
Bill?
I don't have any issues with it at all, I think it's good we're doing it, but, there's always a but, I think that'll be, not just on this one, but in the future, some policy where they come to us 30 days prior.
Agreed.
Good point.
I think that should be policy, so it doesn't...
Agreed.
Let's hurry up, hurry up.
Yes, sir.
I would vote for this, yeah.
Point well taken, okay, motion.
I move that we approve the contract for sheriff services at the fairgrounds with Candlelight Christian Fellowship.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant, moving up to item two. New building inspector plans, excuse me, new building inspector...
Number one, number one, we don't have to stop them.
Oh, that's right, number one, okay. Conversion of the permit tech position to administrative assistant for code, to code enforcement. Christine, are you taking this, or Reba?
Yeah, I'll take this. It's just a straight across, there's no increase, we're not gonna be filling that permit position, so we're just doing a change for what we need.
Okay.
And then this'll take that one position out of the budget ask.
Correct.
Okay, good enough, motion.
I move that we approve the conversion of the permit tech position to administrative assistant to code enforcement.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion is carried. Item number two, new building inspector plans examiner position request. Reba?
Christina.
Christina? Okay.
We are requesting this additional plans examiner, building inspector, due to the fact that we are extremely overloaded for requests for inspections. Right now, unfortunately, we're approximately 11 working days out on inspection request. Our current inspectors, we employ six inspectors, they're roughly doing anywhere from 70 to 75 inspections per day. With travel time, we unfortunately can't really do more than that. We can, but now we're asking the inspectors to do 10 to 11-hour days. So, I'm requesting an additional building inspector plans examiner.
Okay, so question, you have a recent resignation?
I do, yes.
Okay, so that's bringing up the, is he or she being, is he being replaced?
He is being replaced with one of our plans examiners, but not an inspector, no.
Okay, so this is, this is a new position?
This is a brand-new position.
But from a financial perspective, it's almost a wash, isn't it? Because you're losing one and you're adding one, not quite?
No, no. No, we're not, no.
Obviously, from this, I can see it's not, but, okay.
No, this is a full-time body, new position.
Yes.
Even though you're losing a full-time body?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they need both positions, so they will try to hire two people.
So, your inspectors are averaging seven inspections a day?
Seven D.
No, no, seven D as a group, but seven a day per person?
Per person, no, more than that.
Ten.
So, we have six inspectors, so we're roughly doing anywhere from about 12 inspections a day, sometimes more, this is just an average.
Per person?
Yes.
Per person, we actually had an inspector that did 25 inspections the other day.
Oh my goodness.
When I was in the field, I've done roughly about that many per day, and it takes a toll on your body. So, I would prefer not to have someone do that many inspection, even 15 inspections a day is too much, but we're trying to help our contractors get their inspections accordingly, but we just haven't been able to do that.
And you still get incomplete submissions?
No.
No, from the engineers?
Oh, from the engineers, yes.
Which creates, it has a ripple effect, okay.
Right.
Any questions?
No, it's necessary at this point, and when things slow down, we can reevaluate the situation, but I think 11 working days is not acceptable at this point.
To me.
Motion.
I move that we approve the new building inspector plans examiner position for community development.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion is carried. Thank you, Christina.
Item three, we'll handle last, because we'll go into executive session.
Got it, so we'll move to item four?
Mm-hmm.
Request for overlap pay, juvenile probation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go right ahead, Deb.
So, Commissioners, this is to approve the formal request for a two-week overlap with the new director of juvenile probation who's been selected, and I, before my retirement, so it would be for pay period 15, that two-week pay period.
Okay.
There is an attachment from the auditor that shows budget neutral, there'll actually be budget savings for this fiscal year after my retirement, so...
I can see that, I'm fine, absolutely. Guys, you okay?
Yep.
Bill, motion?
I move that we approve the hiring decision for the juvenile...
Nope, sorry.
Which one?
Four, number four.
The four, overlap. I move that we approve the request for overlap pay for juvenile probation.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion is carried, thank you, Deb. Item number five, retention bonus request, 911.
Good morning, I guess, still, this is Lieutenant Higgins for the record. Let me give you a quick overview of what's going on at the 911 center currently. We have, the 911 center is a 24-hour, 7-day, or 24-hour day, 7-day a week business. We have a minimum staffing of four, during the summer, we bump that up to five during the peak hours of the day, because it's just that busy. Currently, we have nine ECOs, two call takers, and five supervisors handling all that workload. We have 12 vacancies and one frozen spot for 13 total, and we have three trainees and five in background, so we're getting there, but we're at a level right now where one supervisor for the month of July is working, has two days off scheduled for the month of July. That is too much work for them, but we don't have a choice. So, what I'm proposing is a retention bonus, appreciation bonus, whatever you want to call it, for now, from the month of June to the end of the budget year, end of the fiscal budget year. It would be a staggered one based on their position, current position, and years of service. So, a supervisor and trainer would get $1,000 monthly bonus, and then anybody with 10 years of service would have 750, five years of service would have 600, which we have none, four years of service, which are usually our newer people, would get a $400 bonus from now until the end of the fiscal year. I talked to the auditor's office, this is a budget-neutral project, its total cost is about $60,000, and, and again, it's budget-neutral, we pay for salary salvage.
Okay, so Sylvia, I'm gonna turn to you. We have a, I don't know that it's a proposal yet, but under consideration, a county-wide, for lack of a better term, stipend or bonus for the remaining months of the fiscal year. Now, we haven't taken this up as a board yet.
Right.
Why would this not fit in with that?
Well, that would be the board's prerogative to then adjust it above, because some of this is more than what we were gonna recommend countywide. We are number nine on the agenda, so from a countywide perspective, we were looking at $500 a month. So, if the board awards, like we have in the past, juvenile detention is receiving bonuses, and so is public defender, they would then be excluded from the countywide bonus, or if they're make, if they're receiving less than the amount approved by the board, if approved, then we would offset that for three pay periods.
Okay.
For the remainder of this fiscal year.
But, but 911 would qualify?
Oh, they would have, in my, in the proposal that would be brought forward by HR, they would have, would be included unless the proposal that Lieutenant Higgins is bringing forward is approved.
Okay, so Lieutenant, we're gonna be taking this up on a basically countywide basis, it's item number nine, it's probably not gonna be, you have one reference here to 750, another to 600, but we're gonna be looking at is probably 500, but it'll be across the board. So, why don't we take it up with item nine?
So, okay, so we'll just, we're not saying no to him, we're just saying that we'll go through item nine and then redo that?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay.
Because it's being considered countywide, so we'll...
Fair enough.
Okay, cool.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Well, you might as well stay there, because you got number six.
Okay, number, number six.
Captain Deep.
That's a new one, variance pay.
Yeah, I don't know what to call it, so that's what it got named. I am requesting the exemption, might be a better word, from Cooney County policy regarding exempt employee pay. Our former 911 director, is that okay to talk out loud on this one?
I, yeah, we're not gonna go into her qualifications or anything, I mean, or, it's, it's fine.
Okay, has been employed with our IT department at the sheriff's office, she still is certified to dispatch, and during the summer months, and with the attrition we've had over there, she's offered to work outside of her regular hours, which is 40 that she's exempt on to do Fridays and Saturdays, working shifts at the dispatch center, 16 hours total for the week, and I'm requesting that overtime pay for her at a current rate, which is, wasn't budgeted for, but it's there in salary salvage, it's still budget-neutral, and the rates are, you've been given the auditor's report for that rate, and this is budgeted out for the year, we're hoping to utilize this person for, through the rest of this fiscal year, and hopefully we'll have some people trained up, and we won't need her at that point, and I don't think she necessarily wants to do that, she's doing it as a favor to help people get days off, most of them are working six, seven days a week, and they're not getting vacations through the summer, so this will help with alleviating some of that burden.
Yeah, I...
But I need your approval for the pay.
How many hours are you anticipating?
16 per week.
Up to 16.
Up to 16, yeah, that's where she's capped out at, too, she's gotta have a day off.
For how long?
Probably at least...
Until the end of the year, except we can reevaluate.
And I would say that's prudent to go through this fiscal year, because we don't know what savings will be there next year, there likely will be, but we know what our salary savings are this year.
Okay, so can you bring this back before the board mid-September?
Yeah, with your approving it and then bringing it back.
Today, correct, yeah, yeah, I'm fine with it, we've gotta think outside the box, and I really appreciate some of these solutions.
Yep.
Okay, Bill, any questions?
None.
If I can just insert?
Yes, please.
It cannot be overtime. An exempt employee by FLSA law has to be exempt, but we can pay her stipend.
It's a stipend, then, yeah. But the rate is what we were more concerned with, that that stipend rate be the same as what would be overtime.
We'll call it a stipend, but it'll be based on the current rate of pay.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Thank you.
We're good, Bill?
I move that we approve the request for variance pay for KCSO 911.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion is carried. Okay, so that takes us to item seven, request for new position treasurer. Steve, treasurer Matheson, Steve, please.
Jill is on the line.
Yeah, she's here.
I'll start this off, she's a little bit more familiar with the details, but I think I can go high-level. We're asking for an FTE addition immediately. We were submitting, and it was in our budget this year, for a 2023 add. However, we were approached by another employee within the county who is leaving, disgruntled, and I don't want that institutional knowledge walking out the door, so we're moving that up immediately. We're funding this position with two contributions, one from solid waste. The activity that we are doing on behalf of solid waste and processing their payments has increased, they've agreed to pay half of this funding, and then we are also eliminating our funding for a temporary employee, which we have been budgeting for, I don't know, at least a decade. So, the combination of those mostly fill it, but there is a small discrepancy, and I'm hoping that maybe Jill or our personnel can tell me what that discrepancy is.
I think Brandy has it.
I'm looking at 36 for an annual, next year, for this year, just under 10,000.
Are we looking at the same thing?
I don't know, I've seen so many versions of this thing going through, I don't know what you guys have.
So, there are... Brandy, can you...
Okay, so Brandy's here, yeah, go ahead, Brandy.
So, for the treasurer's department, it'd be about $9,200 this fiscal year.
Right, that's what I'm looking at here.
And it would be a budget increase, their entire department was underfunded in FY22, because they had all that restructuring done in August, right, as we published the budget, so we couldn't budget for it, so that's why it would be a budget increase, and we'd have to move some fund balance into their budget.
Okay.
And that's even with solid waste contributing to FY22?
Right, solid waste would cover 9,200, and treasurer would need an additional 9,200.
Okay, so when we look at the FY23 projection, at 63,000?
That's the full-loaded cost of the employee, that would be split between solid waste and treasurer.
And I think we...
And that would get budgeted, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be an issue, it's just this year.
So, the treasurer's is half this, half the 65?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and we've already approved it for next year's budget, we approved it in the A section, so...
Okay, motion.
I move that we approve the request for a new position for the treasurer's office.
I second the motion, I'm sorry, I was reading something.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion is carried, thank you. Okay, so that took care of seven, right, item seven? Mm-hmm. So, item eight is a position converger, excuse me, conversion request, go right ahead.
This is a situation where we had...
Steve, do you want me to take this?
If you're ready to, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, go ahead, Jill.
Sure. And I don't know if this should be executive session, I won't say names, but we had an employee ask for a voluntary demotion. In order to have, we have another employee that's willing to take the position that that person is leaving, but in order to have a position for the person who wants the demotion to move into, we have to convert the position of the person that will take the promotion. Does that make sense?
Clear as much.
Yes, somewhat.
So, we want to take, we want to take what's currently a four, a treasury specialist four, down to a three, we want to convert that position to a three.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's a slight increase for FY22 and one for...
I'm fine. Motion?
I move that we approve the position...
I think under $150, I think.
That's correct, for fiscal 22, you are correct.
I move that we approve the position conversion request by the treasurer's office.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion is carried, so that takes care of item number nine, thank you, Steve.
Eight, now we're on that.
Not, item number eight, excuse me, item number nine is next, now that's what we alluded to earlier, and that is a request for countywide retention bonuses, HR, and it's a potential action item. Sylvia, please.
HR is submitting a proposal to the board to provide a countywide retention bonus for the remainder of fiscal year 22, and it would be for three pay periods. Our proposal is to award employees as a retention measure, we're dealing with high turnover, and today we have 118 open positions, so until we can get our fiscal year 23 budget approved, and with the possibility of the significant increases that staff would receive, we want to do something in the interim to retain our staff, so we are coming before the board for the bonus proposal. What I'd like to do is recommend that it would, in the past, last time we did bonuses, we had criteria in place, and we had indicated a regular full-time or part-time employee would need to be successfully with the agency six months. I'd like to recommend that down to 90 days, that the employee would need to be with us. Of course, the employee would need to be in good standing, and not have any kind of improvement plan or last-chance agreement of that nature, and then we would give it in the three pay periods, 15, 17, and 19, and I did talk to the clerk's office, and that will work for them. The other thing, we would prorate the bonus for our part-time staff, or if the board was willing, maybe just say a flat $250 a month, if that'd be easier, 500 for full-time, 250 for our part-time people. And then we would exclude elected officials in this retention bonus proposal, and so where it gets a little complex is we currently have staff receiving retention bonuses, so if they're currently receiving at least $500, they wouldn't get this countywide bonus in addition to what they're already receiving. Now, if we have employees that are receiving less than 500 a month, if the board approves that, or the part-time rate, then we would make sure they're equal to what the county bonus amount would be.
So, you'd make up, we'd make up the difference?
Make up the difference, correct, and this does, even though detention and dispatch has received bonuses in the past, they're not receiving them now, so this would include them at this point. But those were kind of just some criteria and thoughts that HR had, would like to do something for our staff to show we appreciate them, and we understand what they're going through with working short-staffed, as well as the inflationary rate.
And, and I'm looking at the projection?
Yes.
And the total cost for this fiscal year is 1.315 million?
Yes.
Yes, that one would be, the one I'm...
Oh, that's option three.
That's the three months, it's the three, the 90 days.
Three pay periods, it's 1.3 million, there is countywide salary savings of 2.3 million.
So, going back to the lieutenant's request, where I think you basically had three tiers, 750, 600, and 400?
It gets a thousand.
Okay, how do you guys want to handle it?
Well, I want to keep with their request, because this is special, 911, like juvenile detention, like juvenile probation, nope, I said that wrong, juvenile detention and detention, I think we need to pay special attention to those three entities that we can't do without, so I am okay with going for what was submitted, but the 400 would be 500 a month.
I agree. Okay, so you want to go with this 500 across the board? Am I saying, am I hearing you correctly, or no?
Okay, so, so for, let's just talk about only the 911, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So, what they presented was $1,000 for the supervisors and training officers, ECOs, call takers with 10 years would receive 750, ECO and call takers under five years would be 400, but now 500 a month.
Okay, so you want to take that up to 500?
Yeah, and so they, they will now be excluded from the countywide bonus, because they're being treated outside the parameters that we're talking about.
Oh, I see where you're going, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so they won't get an additional 500, that...
Oh, no, yeah, I understood that, okay. So, we need to run, I don't know that it's a dramatic difference, but, how many employees are we talking about, 100?
Um, no.
Is it less?
20, less than 20.
At the 911...
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, we're just dealing with...
At the 911 center, yeah, it's less than, 19 is what we have on staff.
Okay, so technically, we're on item number nine, so if we want to handle that first, then we can go back to item number five.
So, does everybody, oh, I should ask the question, I guess everybody understands, so apart from the discussion we just had with regard to item, with regard to the E911, basically, everybody aside from the part-time is looking at a $500 bonus, excuse me, $500 per month for the remaining three months of the fiscal year, and we're looking at a total cost of the county of about 1.3 million. Are we good?
I think so.
Okay, motion on that one?
And can that bonus be, the eligibility is 90 days versus six months of employment?
I think that's...
My memo originally said six months, but after looking at it, it only impact, we would add 31 more people to it, and I think it's a goodwill gesture.
Yeah.
And that's what you assumed for option three?
Yes.
Yep.
I'm fine. Are we good?
Yep. Yes, yes.
So, and then on the part-time, would you like for us to prorate it based on the hours worked, or just say a flat 250 a month?
Grace, would you like it's flat or prorated?
It really doesn't make any difference at all, Nancy, you're generally...
Yeah, I, sure, I will.
I, to me, flat is better, that's what I would say.
Then 250 for our part-time staff.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, need the eligibility requirement.
You ready for this motion?
I am, go right ahead, here we go.
All right, I move that we approve the request for countywide retention bonuses in the amount of $500 for those full-time employees who've been with the county 90 days or more, starting in pay period 15, with the restrictions as outlined in the memo in regards to performance plans, and... in regards to performance plans, and $250 for those part-time employees, starting in pay period 15.
Okay.
I think I got that all.
That'll be one motion, one motion.
That's one motion.
Second, the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Good motion. So, the motion is passed for countywide bonus. And now we will move back up to.
Item five.
I guess it was item five, which is the retention bonus request for 911.
Yeah.
So, I, I think, I mean, I'm done discussing it, so I'm, I'm ready to approve that as outlined, except changing those lower limits from 400 to 500 to match the countywide.
Okay, and so the other three tiers were 1,000, 750, and 600?
Yes.
Motion?
That's what I did. I made that motion.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. And that motion is carried.
Yes, now we can go back to item number three.
Oh, juvenile detention. JT, thank you. JT?
We, we need to do an executive session, yes. So, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.